Detective Bose meeting the town planning board to order if everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll defer to the approval of minutes to a future date and move on to the possible extension.
We got one.
But not if we've had an opportunity.
Oh, okay. Well, I did something.
You're ahead of the game. Possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to. First one being Al Torres Solar LLC, Mexican Solar LLC. Sean.
So, Mr. Chairman, you had issued a extension which is due to expire whether or not on Sunday, nine seven. That was the last extension you could submit. I just wanted it so the boards aware of what's going on. The applicant submitted a revised plan today for the chairman's signature, which will be the first to have reviewed tomorrow. And hopefully, everything can be sorted out tomorrow inside of this chair. But otherwise.
So there is no extension?
No, there's no extension.
Okay, no action to take in this time. Okay, thank you. Next item is Hamiltonian Park, Section F. We have correspondence here to the planning board dated August twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. Regarding Hamiltonian Park, Section F, request for a six-month extension of time. Addressed to the chairman and planning board members. The subject application for a major subdivision, oh, sorry, submission approval was granted conditional approval in September two thousand twenty. And most recently issued an extension in March of two thousand twenty five. At this time, the applicant is requesting an additional six-month extension to allow the applicant to address meeting the various conditions of approval. The applicant has retained the firm of McGoey-Houser, McGoey, I'm sorry, it's just McGoey. McGoey Consulting Engineers to complete the project and obtain final approval. This firm is the third firm retained for this purpose since the applicant acquired the project. Engineering work on this project was halted when the prior firm, Lang and Tully, became the town engineer. The current firm has not had the time to complete the work necessary to obtain final approval at this time due to the missing CAD files. I am the managing member of fourteen Arthur Place Realty LLC and make this request in its capacity. Andrew Leader, Managing Member. Sean.
The only thing I can add is that I did look around and see if I could locate the missing CAD files. But I would understand that they were missing before the project transfer to Lang and Tully. So it was the engineer that was predated Lang and Tully that may or may not have the CAD files. And the applicant is here this evening to want to hear from them.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dick McGoey, the engineer for the applicant. Candy lighter. Candy lighter, he owns here. They have found CAD files.
He did find them.
And working on trying to transfer them. So things are moving along.
They are proceeding very good.
We appreciate the extension.
Okay, you know, the extension would take us to when?
I got it, Mr. Chairman. Two ninety days will bring you to your February nineteenth meeting.
Comments from the board?
Do you need the additional time? I don't have a problem with that.
We're all good. So can I have a motion then to approve the extension to February nineteenth, two thousand twenty six? Neil, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you for the board.
You got it. Good night. We have a letter here from Pitania Mahon and Ryder, LPLLC, dated August fifteenth, two thousand twenty five. Addressed to the planning board and chairman. Request for an extension of conditional approval and slight modification of the condition of approval. Okay. Dear Chairman and members of the board, we represent the applicant in connection with the redevelopment of the above referenced property. On March twenty first, two thousand twenty four, the planning board adopted an amended resolution of conditional approval. Otherwise known as the amended approval, which modified and removed some conditions to allow multiple dwelling units housing for agricultural workers in buildings seven, nine, and ten, as shown on the plans referenced in the amended approval. The planning board has already extended the amended approval with respect to submitting the plans for stamping and signing for the special use permit. The last extension occurred on March two thousand twenty five. In accordance with the amended approval, the applicant has up to eighteen months to comply with all conditions and obtain the necessary building permits. Pursuant to Section ninety seven dash seventy eight E one of the zoning code, an additional six-month extension can be granted after the eighteen months. In addition, the applicant seeks another six-month extension of the special permit since it has not completed the conditions of the approval within the twelve months. We continue to actively work on the conditions of amended approval. The last remaining condition of the amended approval involved approval of the water system and the operations permit for migrant farm worker housing, both issued by the Orange County Department of Health. We are pleased to report that the Department of Health has approved the water system, but it cannot issue the operations permit for the migrant farm worker housing until the water system is installed. Indeed, the DOH is ready to issue the operations permit as it has already conducted two onsite inspections of the housing itself, which inspectors have passed. Therefore, for the installation of the water system, the operations permit would be issued. However, the applicant is unable to make such installations until he owns the property, which closing is contingent upon the planning board chair signing the final plan. You're keeping track of this now. According to the amended resolution, condition five B, the chair cannot sign the plan until DOH issues the operations permit for the migrant farmer workers housing. Given the fact DOH will not issue the operations permit until the approved water system is installed, the applicant is stuck in a catch twenty-two at this point. We respectfully request that the planning board slightly modify condition five B of the amended approval to push the requirement of the DOH's operations permit for the migrant farm worker housing until, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the farm worker housing. This way, the town will be assured that prior to any use or occupancy of the farm worker housing, the DOH's operations permit will be in hand. If necessary, the applicant will be willing to consider posting a performance guarantee prior to the chair signing the final site plans in lieu of installing the water system approved by the DOH. Subsection ninety seven seventy eight B of the zoning code allows the applicant to post a performance guarantee prior to installation of improvements. In conclusion, we ask that the planning board grant a six-month extension of the amended approval and slightly modify the condition of the amended approval. The applicant has been diligently working on completing the conditions of the amended approval, but needs some more time and this slight modification to complete the DOH and planning board process. Neither the proposal nor surrounding circumstances have changed since March twenty first, two thousand twenty four. Kindly place this on the planning board's next agenda so the planning board can discuss this minor request. In the interim, feel free to contact me with any questions or comments. Sincerely, John First. Let me take a breath. Okay, Sean.
I don't think it's possible for me to add anything more than what you just said. Mr. First is here this evening, if you want him.
How you doing? I apologize for the long letter, but we kind of, I think there's two issues really tonight. One is the six-month extension of the amended approval, and we have been working with the Department of Health. And we are basically at the goal line. The other issue is the modification of condition five B. I don't know if the board wants to just take these issues separately. We'd be happy to come back and forth with the board later tonight to discuss the amendment of the condition. But in essence, we're kind of stuck in a catch twenty-two because the Department of Health is ready to issue the operations permit, but they won't issue it until the water system, which they approved, is actually installed. My client, who's a contract, you know, in contract to purchase the property, is not going to spend the money to install the system until he owns it, until he owns the property. He doesn't own the property, the closing doesn't take place until at least the site plans are signed by the chairperson. That's usually how it goes. I'm not involved in the transaction.
Catch twenty-two.
So we're kind of stuck in this situation. So we're hoping to kind of just push that condition five B a little bit further down. You know, I don't think, and I spoke to Frank earlier today, I don't think he actually issues a CO because it is farm migrant worker housing, which is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Health. But maybe some type of sign-off from either Frank or Sean basically saying, okay, you have the DOH operations permit in hand, you know, you can now, you know, use and occupy the building. So that way, you guys know that not only is the water system installed, but the operation permit is in hand for anyone uses or occupies that housing.
Nobody's in the house presently?
My understanding is, I'm not sure about that house, but I think there are still some holdovers. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Yeah, so they've been living there concurrently throughout this entire process.
Sean, as far as the two different requests, I mean, obviously, we can entertain the extension request presently.
That's correct. Yeah, if you don't get that, then the other topic is moot. So extension request, two, six months would bring you to your March, I'm sorry, would bring you to March twenty first to twenty sixth. And.
March twenty-first, you said?
March twenty-first to twenty twenty-six, and that would be the last extension under this approval.
Open it up to the board.
I have no problem with the extension.
Sure.
No problem with the extension.
No problem with extensions. Not, I have a motion then to grant the extension to March twenty first, two thousand twenty-six.
There's no motion.
Phil, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? That takes care of the first part. As far as the second request.
Do you want to handle that now, or do you want the applicant to come back?
I think what we should do in fairness to the other applicants would be to postpone that to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we can have that conversation.
Yep.
And proceed with the agenda as it was written.
No problem.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next item for possible extension or abandonment of application is the pursued subdivision. We have correspondence from Nick Woodmetta, Senior Engineer for Pichazak and Fowl, dated August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Please let this letter serve as our request for a ninety-day extension of final approval for the above referenced project. The applicant is currently advancing the status of the public improvements in an effort to reduce the performance bond amount prior to plan signature. Should you have any questions or require anything further, please do not hesitate to contact the office. Again, liquid letter. Did you have anything to add to that, Sean?
No. The roads are being built.
Sean?
Yeah, Mr. First, correct, the roads are being built. This is just for phase three. Phase three, as indicated, the roads are going in. In fact, we just proved twelve one yesterday. That's really all of this, Mr. Chairman. They did ask for one ninety day, which would bring you to their December fourth meeting. I know sometimes the board likes to escalate, would take two ninety days, and that would take you to your February nineteenth meeting, if that's the way you want to go.
You'd like the two? So February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-six. Comments from the board?
No problem.
No issue? This one? Could I have a motion then to provide the extension to their final approval to February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-six? Neil, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? You got it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Gibbs Garden LLC, twenty-four dash one dash seven. Application for a site plan approval from agricultural warehouse and onion packing facility on ten point six six, plus or minus acres along Pulaski Highway, counting with six. There was Nuski Road in the AI zone with an AQ three overlay. And we're here to discuss also part two EAF. First question I'm going to ask everyone is, is there anyone here from the public for this public hearing? Specifically? Not yet, okay. Joe, if you could just give us a refresher?
Yes.
And for anyone that's interested in the audience as well to see what's being proposed.
Okay, this project, it's a parcel of land in the town of Goshen, obviously. It's about a ten-acre parcel of land, has frontage on Pulaski Highway and on Nuski Road. The proposal is for the construction of twenty-two thousand eight hundred square foot produce packaging facility. The access will be completely from Nuski Road. There will be no access to Pulaski Highway except for potentially emergency vehicles. There are a number of buildings on the property, all abandoned at this time, except there's an existing storage building that also is on Nuski Lane that will be also part of this operation. There's an existing well on site, we'll be utilizing that well, we'll be testing it in accordance with the town requirements. And we also will be proposing a new sanitary disposal system to service the project. All of the loading and parking will be from Nuski Road. We have five loading docks and seventeen parking spaces. We anticipate fifteen employees working this facility. And that is, in a nutshell, what the proposal is. It is in the AI zone, it's an allowable use. So we're here tonight seeking any comment from the public and hopefully a site plan approval at some point.
Thank you, John. Sean.
So, Mr. Chairman, I circulated written comments before the applicant's last appearance in August. You might recall, this use requires site plan approval. And then during that August twenty-first meeting, you had a couple of discussion points that you asked the applicant to be prepared to discuss tonight. That was the number of employees, and the applicant confirmed fifteen.
Correct.
And then you had asked them to identify any demands associated with water for processing any produce. You'd asked them whether onions would be the only produce processed at this facility. And you had asked them for verification on the currently vacant buildings, whether those would be demolished or whether they would remain vacant. Other than that, solicit for a public hearing.
And the response as far as water uses was what now?
The water is going to be strictly for the packaging facility. There was, there was an indication of whether or not the other buildings were connected and are. There's only a single well on site, and so Neil had asked if there were additional wells on site. And we are not utilizing any of those existing buildings. We are not proposing to demolish any of them. There may be some time in the future that Mr. Gaim, who actually is here this evening to answer additional questions, you know, might come back for an amended approval to maybe rehabilitate some of the buildings on a separate location.
As they stand now, they're not habitable?
They are not habit, well, they're not, they're vacant.
Well, vacant means somebody could move in tomorrow.
And I would say, for the most part, they're not habitable. I mean, if you, most of them are not habitable. I haven't been inside them, but looking at them from the outside, they don't appear to be habitable.
And then the other question you mentioned as far as the well. I noticed on this site plan from July eighteenth, the existing well is located differently on the plans than the plans from June fourth.
Yes, it's corrected, it's in the correct location.
The most current plan is the correct one?
That's correct.
Okay. And then also on the details for the well, you know, everything seems to be proposed depths, proposed casing on the back sheet. But it's an existing well, we're not doing anything to redevelop the well, is that correct?
Correct. As long as the well testing comes out.
Favorable.
Favorable, which we don't anticipate a problem because we have a low water usage.
Comments from the board? Questions or concerns?
Your client understands that vacant means that those buildings cannot be occupied.
Correct.
Unless he comes back to.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay.
Other comments, questions?
I think, I think they answered the one question as to any other produce, and I think the answer is that some of the onions packaging, I think.
Is that correct, just onions?
Just onions.
Just onions.
That's sounding like a water issue, right? Is that a common water testing? Because I had a question I left. You're proposing testing the water at a much higher level than you need to, anticipating some future usage. Can you talk that one through?
Yeah, the reason for that is we believe that there's really not going to be a whole lot of difference in the testing between, I think it's two hundred and ninety gallons a day and six hundred gallons a day, I think, will we. And the reason being is, if for some reason we do come back with a couple other buildings or for some other use, instead of going through the expense of retesting, we feel confident that a higher rate will be favorable, and that way we don't have to come back for the expensive retesting and re-monitoring and re-going through the whole process again. That's really the only reason.
Thank you.
Do you know how deep the well is?
I do not. That'll probably come out when the, when they, they go and actually do the testing, but I do not. I will try my best to find that information out.
Neil, I just wanted to follow up what you had said for Marty. I think what the board can do if they're concerned about that, if you could make a condition that that well can only be connected to the proposed building, and then the future connection on that well to any other buildings on site you need to come back to.
Yeah, I certainly have that data, I would like to see every other building disconnected.
I don't, are they connected now? As far as you know?
Certainly, at some point in time, they had water.
Yeah.
So I would assume that they were disconnected, yes.
Yeah.
Anyhow, I think as a.
Do the dwell, and they've only run a new line to the new well.
Yeah.
So we have on the agenda, Sean, part two EAF?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that was, Kelly had prepared one before she left. I had thought that it was circulated out, but it wasn't. So I just found that out today. So what I would say is that we will take care of it for the next appearance for this applicant. We'll get it out to you.
Proceed with the public hearing. Again, I'll ask if anyone from the public is here for this application. Are they here for the application? What I'm going to do, just in case.
Can I just?
Well, no, we're not ready for you.
Okay.
And you need to raise your hand, but I asked if anyone was here.
I did, but you didn't see me, it's okay.
Okay, well, first we have to open the public hearing, and then you're welcome to speak. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
You have the motion.
Phil, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, public hearing is open. What I would ask then, for anyone who wishes to speak at this public hearing, may you state your name, your address, and your concern or question, and it'll be duly noted, and we do have our first speaker.
Good evening, my name's Chris Haley, I'm a resident of the town of Goshen, I'm Howard Court. I'm also a sitting member of the environmental review board. We did get this project at the ERB. I do believe you've answered the questions on water, and I like that. I would like to say that as a lifelong resident of the town of Goshen, to see a farmer come to the board with a farm project makes my heart glow. I think farmers have it hard enough without having to put up with too much red tape. This is a farm site, it's approved. This is the type of building, if you will, that I really like to see. I would like to see this approved. I will say that some of the outbuildings that are in on the parcel itself, to say they're not habitable is an understatement. I think they'll come down in the next strong wind. I would think that it would be wise to either rehab the buildings or remove them if it's going to be tied to this parcel of land. I don't think it'd be much in the way of an expense to the applicant, and it would certainly make the place look nicer. As it is, they are actually looking from the road, they look dangerous. So it'd probably be in the applicant's best interest to have those removed. Once again, it's the type of project I like to see in Goshen, I do hope you approve it quickly. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Joe, I have a question for you.
Yes.
The entrance onto Pulaski Highway, I think this has come up in a previous meeting. We have those two driveways that go out that are not going to be used for anything but emergency vehicles. What are we doing to safeguard against vehicles coming in and out of there? How do we decide to resolve that?
Well, we have, we're still discussing that. One of the, one of the potential is to put in a gate that might have a night knock box on it. But we're still discussing that with the applicant. We'd like to keep it though for the emergency access.
We're all for it.
Suppose they're removing it altogether.
Because as long as the safeguards are replaced, so it's used for that purpose. Anyone else from the public? Other comments from the board? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Public hearing is closed, we thank the public. Oh, proceed from here?
Yeah, just, I mean, I just wanted to confirm that the applicant will consent, because I know once you close the public hearing, it's a shot clock. So as long as the applicant extends to.
Yes.
That extending the timeframe, I have no objection.
Sixty-two day.
Correct. Thank you. Is it too early to ask to prepare a draft resolution?
We, I would say the next application we got to take care of secret, but if the board wants to, you could authorize. We're already going to prepare the part two, or it just wasn't distributed. Or if you want to authorize a mag dep and a conditional.
Conditional approval based on the comments that were made, certainly. Could I have a motion?
There's no move.
Phil, second by?
I'll second.
Neil, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, you know what you need to do on Saturday?
I do.
I almost wanted to say that.
Thank you, Murray, actually.
You're better. Have a good evening.
You too.
Is there anywhere you can put that on?
I couldn't.
Tripods, if anyone from the public wants to see it as well, unless you have another copy of it.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to see it.
Oh, we definitely want to see it, but, well. Angle a little bit, everyone has an advantage. Perfect. That works. Okay. Next item on the agenda is sixty. Next item on the agenda is sixty, uh, the Goshen Hospitality LLC. Ten dash one dash fifty-six point two and fifty-six point four. We have an application for a site plan and special permit for hotel and restaurant complex on sixty-three point three plus or minus acres. That's the total holdings. Long Chichunk and six and a half station roads in the CO district, AQ six, scene road, floodplain, ponding, street corridor, and reservoir overlay districts. We're here this evening to, uh, take a look at some revised plans. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for having us. So you saw this plan, uh, about a year and a half ago. The, um, finding statement for this project was adopted, uh, around May twenty twenty-four. And at that time, the applicant was, um, still pondering, trying to get sewer from the, uh, village of Goshen. So we tried and tried and tried to make that happen. But it does not appear that the village is, um, moving in that direction, or at least not fast enough for this, the applicant. So we are going forward with the onsite wastewater treatment plant, which was originally closer to Chi. Yeah, sorry, uh, closer to Chichunk Road, but within the, um, the wetland buffer. This plan shows the wastewater treatment plant moved, um, further up the hill, um, behind hotel number one. That's the first change to the plan. The second, uh, change is the, uh, the second restaurant in the back here has been made smaller. And then the third change is the hotels, which were previously four-story hotels, have been now shown as three-story hotels. All one level. So the first level before it was a four-three split to make up the grade going up the hill. They're now just, um, three stories on all sides.
And, uh, in order to do that and still achieve the same number of rooms, how much larger did the footprint get?
The footprints are actually not that much bigger. In fact, I did some calculations. And they're actually. Where did I put that? One of my notes here somewhere. I'm sorry. I thought I had them right here. Here we go. Yep. So the total footprints for the FEIS, um, plan was, uh, just over forty-nine thousand square feet for all three hotels. The revised three stories are fifty-five thousand square feet. So I can, I mean, I can give you the breakout for each one if you'd like, but.
Not necessarily.
So they are slightly larger. They're not as large as they were because, um, these hotels don't have all the amenities that the previous hotels had. So no pool.
None of the.
No pool, no spa, no restaurant or meeting rooms. Just the basic hotel lobby, um, breakfast area, fitness room. Just the basics. Correct.
The facades for the buildings, did that remain the same as what we saw in the, uh?
They, um, they will, um, yes. Yes, I'm just gonna say yes.
Do we know how the cut and fill is affected by the different, uh?
We have not done the grading plan yet because we wanted to come to you first to see if you had any comments on the, the new layout before we went ahead and, and did that undertaking.
I, I went back and I looked at the FEIS. And, um, as I understood the FEIS, part of your rationale for the need was the anticipation that Legoland would have ten thousand visitors per day in their period, in the period of April to October.
Okay.
When the park is open. Have you checked what their visitations are? Is that, was your assumption, your estimation correct?
Um, I have not checked, no.
I think that would be helpful to, going back to the question of what is the need for three hundred and thirty-two units?
I thought that was established in the seeker findings.
Again, that was, you made the estimate that there would be ten thousand vis- visitors per day.
Okay, but I'm not, I guess I'm not firing.
Now we have experienced since it's open to see what really is.
But it was open when we established the seeker findings in twenty twenty-four.
Well, if, if, uh, it were open, you still base it on an estimate.
I mean, I can find out what the numbers are. That is helpful. I just, I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I can see the relevance. You know, this is a site plan.
Goes back to the issue of what is the need for that number of units?
But that's not one of the site plan criteria. That's not a special use criteria.
I'd have to go back and look at the special use.
We could certainly find that information, but I don't, again, I don't see the relevance.
Okay.
Is your, is your plan to develop this based on Legoland only?
No, I mean, in the, the findings, we talked about the medical usage, um, in, I mean, there's a bunch of different uses that, um, you know, needed hotel space. So it's not just based on Legoland, no.
I don't think Legoland's up to ten thousand a day consistently, but.
Other comments?
I just have two questions. One is, was in Shuns memo about the wastewater. There were elements, uh, that were underground before.
Yes, there still will be elements underground and, um, yeah, they, we just showed the above ground elements. We should, we need to show them on the, um, they'll, they'll show up on the utility plan.
And then just based on what you described about sort of the new orientation of the hotels, from an amenities perspective, would you still characterize these hotels as sort of serving the same purpose and the same, um, clientele, let's say? Or is it different?
Well, I mean, I suppose you, you won't be able to have the, um, the meeting space that, you know, we had anticipated having. So you won't have that conference area that, that was there before, and there won't be the, the spa. So I'm sorry, you can't get confused.
But the, it sounds like the target audience for these is still tourism and medical.
Correct. Yes, correct. Not weddings, not, yeah. Right.
Sean? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You have five thousand square feet. Is any of that five thousand square feet moving closer to the roads?
No, nope. The, um, this building line has not changed. Um, in fact, I don't think even this, these two building lines have changed.
Actually, I want to confirm. If you can confirm that, please.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I can, I can, um, the next time we come back, I can show you the difference between them.
And in your general notes in the upper left corner, you're still referencing two ten thousand square foot restaurants.
Thank you.
Sean?
So, Mr. Chairman, um, if I could start just kind of going back to what Phil had said. I think what the applicant is getting at is that they've completed seeker and that this plan is consistent with seeker in part because this board asked them to study this alternative before you moved into the finding statement, right? So one of the overarching points, I think, is for the applicant to make sure and review the finding statement and to make sure any mitigations that were incorporated in there can still be incorporated in this plan and that we don't lose their, we don't concede. And I presume they've already done that, but I think they need to discuss that with you. In terms of just some other items, uh, Lee picked up on the, the note. I just wanted the board to be aware. There was one other item on that note that is no longer, the cottages are no longer, uh.
Was still the cottages in there?
Yeah, there, there's a note on there about the cottages, but those were eliminated.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
The application, um, relied on a couple of determinations by the ZVA. And that was based on the old site plan. So for example, one of the items was that the landscaping proposed in the parking lot was sufficient to meet certain criteria. I don't know if the ZVA would have the same determinations on the new plan. So one of the recommendations I had the applicant was, before coming back to you with this site plan, that you should make sure that those ZVA determinations are still in place.
Can I ask a question? So if the landscaping has not changed and the front elevation hasn't changed.
And the building location.
And the building location hasn't changed, would we still need to be referred to the ZVA?
We can superimpose the two lines together.
You're not referred.
Oh, okay, I thought.
No, this board doesn't refer you, no, I'm not making a recommendation that you, but I would say that you would want to make sure that those determinations are still viable because if they're no longer viable, then you, you're wasting your time with this board. I mean, they reviewed a site plan, they gave you a favorable determination, you've changed the site plan. I would still want to make sure that those.
Yeah, but the components that the zoning board was considering haven't changed. You know, the landscaping is still the same up front. The elevation change is still the same up front. I mean, we can certainly confirm that.
Yeah, what I would like to see just personally, I mean, I would like to see just a narrative showing exactly what this board approved and then in, uh, doing a chart form, okay, and showing what, because again, you're, you're going less than what you had approved. So just, I would like that just filled out.
Yeah, we can superimpose the two site plans.
Right, but I also like to see like a written narrative just to say, hey, look, this is what we are changing. This is where we started, this is where we're at.
And pushing certain impacts.
Yeah, exactly. Because again, I, I hear what you're saying, but I just, I like to see it laid out for the board so that they see in a narrative. Again, you're showing on your site plan, but I like to see a narrative format here. Here are the changes. Here's the chart that was approved back, what year was it? Twenty twenty, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and here's what we're doing now. And again, I'm, I'm sure it's going to support your, what you're trying to show, but I think it's helpful for us in the board just to see those changes in narrative form.
Okay.
Sean, in that same vein, did the ZVA rule that building one, there would go parking in front of it?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was one of the items.
Actually, they covered all three buildings to be safe. We, we haven't reviewed all three buildings because technically the parking could be considered in front of the hotel two and three. So at the time they ruled because of the landscaping and elevation, since you can't see the parking spots, that that provision was, was met and we didn't need a variance. And so we'll show you that none of that has changed. The renderings we provided them hasn't changed. The elevations we provided them hasn't changed. We'll confirm all that because I think that's a good point. But I, I mean, I, I think we're, we're consistent with what the ZVA had approved, but we'll present that so that everybody knows that.
Yeah, I just think it'd be helpful for everyone just to illustrate that for the record, it'd be a good idea to do that.
Jane? With, with the reduction in the height of the hotels, the height of the water storage tank, obviously that's a volume issue. But the pump house, everything with the pumps, is that all being revised as far as design?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, that, yeah, because now we don't have four-story buildings. We won't have that extra floor reach. So, yeah, the, the tank, um, size will probably change slightly. What's that?
You need less water?
Not less water, but less elevation.
You, you need less elevation if you weren't, if, if you're pumping anyway. If you don't, I mean, the volume of water for fire protection and for domestic use is not going to change.
We'll stay, we'll stay the same.
That's the same.
Correct, correct.
But, you know, it's just a matter of the pumps, how, you know, how far they have to push up the height of the column of water up the hotel. Why would the tank change?
This, well, these would all be gravity fed because the tank is higher.
Okay, so we'll, we'll meet the third floor without going through the pump station?
Correct. Yeah, the pump station was just to get the water from the wells to the tank.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Once it gets here, it's, it's, um, gravity fed.
One of the other items, and this was in the finding statement, and I don't expect the applicant to comment on it tonight, but one of the purposes for going to the ZVA and requesting the height variance was so they can incorporate peak roofs, uh, in their design. And now you don't, you know, you didn't get those variances, but I'm hearing that the elevation is still staying the same. Does that mean roof slopes are still also being the same?
We'll confirm the, the building heights. So the definition, we'll check the definition and check the building heights. To confirm that we're under thirty-five feet because.
But there's more, there's more to it than that. The town code has design standards, and one of those is for peak roofs.
Right.
Okay. So it, it doesn't matter if you hit the, the, the height elevation, you also need the peak roof component architectural.
Peak roof or cornices?
Raised cornice, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, flat roofs with raised cornices.
And, you know, if that does change, then that, that may be a seeker issue that you need to, you need to consider that. Since the twenty twenty-four finding statement, there have been modifications to the state stormer regulations and wetland regulations. So, you know, the applicant, I recommend they take a look at that, see if they're still in compliance, and, uh, that, that's really all I had.
I should mention that the, um, the wetlands map, um, that we had, um, from the DEC did expire. But we have gotten it re, um, revalidated. I think it's dated end of July, so we're good for another five years. And the boundary did not change.
Yeah, just to echo Sean's point, I'm not so much concerned about the wetlands because you wouldn't be subject to that with this type of modification, with the, the regulations that changed on January first, but it's more the stormer that you really, is more the issue.
Other comments from the board? Sean, how do we proceed from here at this point?
I think the applicant was just looking for your initial comments on the site plan, right?
Right, site plan, and then the, the last, um, I guess, item, um, I guess we're looking for a little bit of direction on is, developers looking to get this approved in phases. So the idea is to get the, the overall development, um, plan approved as far as, um, utilities is concerned. So, you know, we would have, um, you know, these footprints for the buildings, but you're not specifically approving the site plan for each building right now because we don't know, you know, what the building, um, is gonna, who's gonna come and develop it at this point. So, um, to, to do a, um, an elevation or renderings of the building is sort of.
But the placement of the buildings and the parking, that's going to be fixed?
Would be, yes, correct. So that's what we're looking for, I guess, with this approval would be the overall site plan. And then when each building is ready to be constructed, they would come back for an individual site plan for those.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I may be thinking of another project, I thought it was this one as well. That it was being proposed as phases, that the well, the.
Correct, yeah.
Certain things in, in one restaurant, one hotel, where something was being built initially and then.
Yes, in phases to meet the five acre.
Right.
Limit, right, yes. So we, that's already.
So that's still in place.
Correct.
So you're asking to, you might come back when you have an actual developer to make a presentation as to the look of the building.
If they want to change it from what's in the seeker findings, yes. If they want to build it exactly as was in the seeker findings, then.
Wouldn't be a need.
There would be no need, correct.
Why wouldn't we approve the whole project and then only have it come back to us if there's a change in what, what you're going to make it look like?
Yeah, we could build like a condition and to kind of cover that.
I mean, well, well, yeah, because I think, I like the renditions that you gave, but I think it looks pretty darn good.
Okay.
And so if somebody's going to come in and build it, I don't know why we would say, no, come back to us first.
I don't think we would. I don't think that's what we think.
So, and so I think that may benefit you.
Just to get the whole thing.
Get the whole thing, and then if somebody wants to say, no, I want to look something different, I want the double trees out there or something.
Yeah, just for a simple, then you, I'd rather see just a master site plan approved, and then this is the box, this is the zoning envelope, this is what you're going to do. And then to the extent of, if they're going to modify it later on, you come back. But I'd rather have this board approve a master site plan that this is it, and we know it's, and if they're going to modify it, that's, that's up to, you know, any developer that wants to do that, if they want to do that. But I, I, I would be more comfortable having you all approve the site plan as it is.
And then it'll just be phased into correction.
That's right.
Anything else, Jane?
That's it.
In that case? Got some work to do.
Awesome. All right, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda. Six and eight Gumwood Drive Harness Estates LLC. Twenty-seven dash ten dash point dash two and three. We have an application for a site plan special permit. Two single-family dwellings on two point seven-one plus or minus acres, total holdings. Gumwood Drive and HR Zone with an AQ three floodplain, ponding, street corridor, reservoir, watershed overlays. We're here this evening for initial presentation and to commence the secret process. Welcome.
Very good. Hi, good evening. My name is Charlie Bizidlo. I'm counsel for the applicant. We're here, so we'll, we'll sentence about that these lots are in a lot of different zones. But basically what we have is that these are two lots in the Arcadia subdivision that was, uh, approved back in, I believe, set in the early seventies and the mid-seventies. The two lots are on Gumwood Drive, they're at the end of Gumwood Drive, which will. The two lots are on Gumwood Drive, they're at the end of Gumwood Drive, which leads off of Wedgewood, so everyone gets an idea where they're at. The applicant wanted to get a building permit for the two lots, was issued a highway, a driveway opening permit by the highway department, and then it was discovered, I guess, if you will, that they were in these different zones, the floodplain zone, aquifer zone, stream corridor zone. We had a technical meeting, and it was indicated that we need to get site plan approval, possibly special permit from this board, because the lots are in those zones. We had a technical meeting back probably last year, I'm gonna say, maybe right around this time, October or so of last year, it was brought up two issues that primarily that the code, particularly the floodplain code, requires that even if you were to raise the elevation of the buildings above the flood zone, which we intend to do, there's still this issue about access to them, and whether the access is also above the flood elevation. Gumwood Drive, an existing town road, is not above the flood elevation, as are a number of the houses that are on Gumwood Drive, the flood area actually extends all the way up to Wedgewood, so we went to the ZBA and explained our plan to them, and asked them for variances from the floodplain regulations, as well as the stream corridor and the aquifer district also. That board issued, had a public hearing, issued a decision earlier this year, granted us relief, certainly for the roadway, that the limitation that the roadway has to be outside the flood zone is clear.
When you say roadway, you took a, town road?
The town road, the town road, yeah, the town road, the town road, that access, the access to these lots, even though it's in a floodplain, is relief, we have relief for that. They also asked questions about, well, will you be raising the buildings up, there was a number of questions about what that would be, we indicated to them that we would raise the first-floor elevation of the buildings two feet above the flood elevation.
No basements?
No basements, no, no, I believe we're talking about building bi-level type homes, so, no, no basements. So, we're here, one of the things the planning board asked about, that they still assumed that we would come back to this board, I guess the assumption is we come back to this board and get the site plan approval, or that this board would look at the issues for a site plan approval and possibly a special permit. The written decision that was issued by the planning board is.
By the zoning board.
By the zoning board, excuse me, by the zoning board, thank you, the written decision by the zoning board is pretty broad, it's pretty broad, and I think it could be interpreted to say that you're within all of the requirements of the, of those regulations. However, you know, we're here in front of the board, if you feel that there still is some jurisdiction, we're here with the application, I think the key things to look at in this application would be, this issue is about, are the buildings subject to their height, is there any stormwater control issues associated with this? And, and again, also the idea about from this, the stream corridor regulations about, is it compatible with the area around, which it is, it's a residential area, so, so that's the initial conversation, and we're here to answer any questions, so, thank you.
Sean, so usually, Mr. Chairman, I start out just confirming that the applicant received my comments, and I didn't notice the applicant in the audience reading my comments and frowning, so I helped it. As you, does this board know, because you've dealt with other similar applications, single-family uses in this zone, NERU are permitted by law, however, if an applicant is in a stream corridor overlay, as you recently have dealt with, they have to come to you for a site plan approval. I believe the code indicates that they would have to come to you for a special permit, but in the floodplain, you've just heard from the applicant, they've indicated that they've received a very broad decision from the ZBA, and this board may not have jurisdiction at all. That's a very difficult question that I'm gonna leave the council, but before I do that, I just want to just touch on a couple other concerns that this board may have and routinely discuss. So, in addition to the floodplain overlay, there's also a floodplain development permit, and that is administered by the building inspector, right, and that is a component of the town providing flood insurance and being in the federal flood insurance program, they have to have that permit processed and placed. Because one of these lots is actually in the floodway, which is a different classification than the floodplain, they are required under that permit to provide a technical analysis, a technical evaluation, to make sure they're not gonna raise the level of the floodway, or they have to apply to FEMA for a map revision, right? Wouldn't affect anything this board does, I'm just pointing that out to the applicant right now, because that would be something in future. What may play into the site plan approval is, also under that floodplain development permit, the applicant is supposed to offset any filling in the floodplain with an equivalent hydraulic volume excavation. So, these are small lots, I don't know if they are, you know, where they can do that.
You're talking because of the driveway and the footprint of the building itself?
That's correct, they're building the building up, which is understandable, so that volume that they used to build up, they have to offset that somewhere else, either on their site or adjacent to their site, they have wetland constraints and they have other constraints, I don't know if they can actually meet that requirement.
That one's easy one to address, Sean, we, this applicant actually owns a third lot next to these, and so that area is available, if the board felt that it was a condition that it imposed, we could create a small hole or regrade that, regrade that lot to.
Again, there is this jurisdictional question that, you know, it's gonna get into, if it is determined this board has jurisdiction, I would say that that lot needs to be part of this application, and they should include that work, and, you know, whether that would be covered by a grading permit or not. Assuming that a site plan approval was required, grading permit wouldn't be necessary, it would be a site plan approval by this board. There is also a requirement for a minimum lot size, now, what I think may have tripped the applicant up in their initial application was, there's a minimum lot size requirement, these lots are larger than that, however, your code requires you to take out any constrained lands, wetlands and floodplains, which these lots are significantly impacted by. So I don't know if you've done the math on that, but you may need another variance from the ZBA, because I don't think you need a minimum lot size.
These lots are totally within the floodplain.
Then you would need another variance from the ZBA.
I don't know if I would agree with that, Sean, I think that they're pre-existing non-conforming lots for one instance, and the second, I think the variance decision issued by the zoning board covers that.
Okay, and they vary no way, but if I could, Mr. Chairman, just, I don't agree with that, and it's not my determination, but the reason I don't agree with the legally pre-existing non-conforming condition is these lots were platted in nineteen seventy-two, the floodplain was, maps were recently updated in two thousand and nine, and I presume when these lots were created, the board did not create lots that floodplain that couldn't be developed, so I don't know if that is gonna hold order, but that's up to other people to decide.
Okay.
Sean, I'd just want to add to that point, though, because to your point is that, yeah, you may have been grandfathered by zoning, but in terms of environmental regulations that come out, you don't get grandfathered by those, you know, they may have been pre-existing non-conforming as to zoning metrics, but as to the actual environmental regulations, that, you're stuck with, so again, we have to look at whether you have to go back to additional variance, but that wouldn't necessarily exempt you, if that legislation came out, it was in the seventies, and you did nothing on the property, and all of a sudden something came out years later, and you didn't take any action on the property, you'd still be subject to that environmental regulation, again, not so much a zoning regulation, but environmental regulation, so I know, because I've argued this cases on that, that I've handled, so.
I think I would respectfully at this point disagree, I don't think it's an environmental regulation, I think it's a zoning regulation, I think it is a bulk area requirement similar to setbacks.
And by the way, it's something, but again, I know for just litigating this stuff, I know if it's an environmental regulation, you don't get grandfathered by, if it's a zoning, if it's in the zoning code, and it's a zoning, then, you know, then you may have something to argue, but I'm just saying, it's strictly environmental section of the code, and it's, you're not basing that from it, that's all.
The fact that it was mentioned that they had a third lot, is there any advantage to merging that land into the two lots?
I don't know where the logic is, the applicant can describe that.
Are they adjacent?
Adjacent, it's adjacent.
Would there be any benefit?
It's under ten.
Six, eight, ten.
Six, eight, ten.
Would there be any benefit to moving the lot lines, making it two lots, as far as meeting the bulk requirements?
You certainly could.
So, so, also in the floodplain, so I don't know whether.
It's even closer to the floodplain, I think it's.
Probably even closer.
I think that, I think some of that was a result of the DEC giving you permission to open the buffer, I think that they looked at the three lots and said, we'll give you permission to build two, but not the third one.
That could be, I wasn't involved in the details about it, but we do have a DEC permit that allows us to build in the buffer zone, we're not talking about filling in the wetland, and so it's.
Lee, if I just could weigh in, Charlie, refresh my memory, but when we were going through the zoning board discussions, that third lot, there was a discussion, I believe, that you were gonna possibly offer it to the town, I don't know if any of that language was passed into the decision, maybe it was forgotten.
It's not a decision, no, it's not a.
So that's off the table, that it's gonna be offered to the town?
It was never followed up with.
Okay, just wanna put it on the record for the, get a little flavor of this, so.
Thanks, Frank.
It's available there for, I'll call it mitigation, if necessary.
Other comments from the board?
Yeah, another question, under what length buffer, what distance did they give you allowed to encroach it for that buffer, how much?
It's shown on the, on the site plan itself, the.
Okay, so that limit of disturbance was put in, that's the DEC limits?
Yes, it shows, the survey slash site plan shows the boundary of the wetland is, shows where the rougher is, and allows us to put the driveways and the building within the buffer area.
Okay, I don't, I don't quite see it that way, but I see fresh, wetland boundary, when I see limits of disturbance, then I don't see the buffer, way up there, okay.
It's on this lot.
All right, all right.
Both of them do.
Wetland boundary, where that buffer goes into the middle of the house.
I just wanted to confirm how far the DEC was allowing you to go into the buffer, that's the whole, that's the whole question I have.
Very good.
Other comments, questions?
If you could just give me an idea of what the plan is to build these out of, above the floodplain, are you gonna bring in fill?
Yes.
Yes.
Bring in fill, so there's some slab, there's no basements, and to have the foundation, the slab.
Two Z.
Two feet above the potential floodplain.
I think it's similar, it's four, seven, it's gotta come up like three feet up on the road. All right, that's, for now, that's all I have.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, let me give you a couple, just my thoughts on this, so, I did read the decision, and I'm trying to wrap my head around this one, because when I look at the decision, I'm used to seeing a zoning board decision with metrics, right, so they're calling area variances, and they're calling out that, you know, you receive variances from section ninety-seven, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, which deal with floodplain, stream corridor, reservoir, watershed, and the aquifer overlay, right? So, normally what I would see, again, just from what I've seen, okay, you do comply with these, but let's say you can't meet the setback, it's a fifty-foot setback, they would request an area variance from that metric in that section, but when I look at this and I read this decision, it basically says, you could read it in a way that's saying, okay, well, they don't have to comply with any of it.
It's like a very broad stroke.
It's a broad stroke in saying, you basically now don't have to comply, it's almost like a legislative action was taken, that they don't have to comply with anything, as opposed to a variance, so, again, that's how I read it, and if I was in your shoes, that's the position I would take, because I would say that they've written this decision to say that they don't have to comply with those sections. There's also section ninety-seven, seven-three, which is not mentioned in here, but only, it's only triggered on the special permit if it's in the stream corridor and you're required to do site plan, so, you know, there's the thought that they're not even, don't even need to be before you at this point, I mean, this is now a point where it's really just a situation where they just go to the building inspector and say, okay, apply for a permit, if you have any conditions, the building inspector has the conditions they want to put on it, it's up to him at this point, because, again, I haven't seen a decision like this, I mean, usually, it's from metrics of that code provision, but this decision says that it's, they're not, they're exempt from ninety-seven, twenty-five, they got a variance from twenty-six and twenty-seven of your zoning code, but I don't see any metric that's connected to that, it's just saying you don't have to apply to this section, and again, as the land use guy, I find that a little bit interesting, that you're just saying I don't have to comply with the zoning at all. You know, there's, like I said, usually, I'll just give you an example, if you look at ninety-seven, twenty-six, going there now, just give me a moment. This is the stream corridor section, right, so, for example, it talks about setbacks, no principal structure shall be located within one hundred feet of a water course, no accessory structure two hundred square feet or larger, other than a boathouse, shall be located within fifty feet of a water course, no hazardous materials may be stored within a hundred feet of a water course, and these setbacks shall apply to all uses, including agriculture, setbacks shall be measured horizontally from the mean-high water line of the water course, so, those are numbers there, right, so it's specific, so if you couldn't meet those numbers, then that's what I would like to see, okay, you're gonna build within the hundred-foot, okay, show us, and that's the variance you got, here, it's saying I don't have to comply with this at all, and that's how you can read this decision.
And I have no objection to that.
I've been in your shoes, and I respect that, and I'm just, but I'm just telling the board exactly how, if I'm you, I'm gonna be very upfront, that's how I would read this as well.
So, that's the position you take, is that your position?
I agree with this position, but.
Well, that comes down to what's our position as a board.
Right, so your position as a board, if you're taking the zoning decision, what it's done effectively is taking this out of your hands and put it in Frank's lap.
Frank, what do you have to say about this?
You know, this application came in years ago to pull permits, right, and I planned it because of these overlay districts, I was proceeding, we got some good documentation from the DEC, the floodplain, raising the house, that's all doable, right, that's done, it's been done before, and there's methods to meet that, so, I will proceed based on what this planning board says.
Site plan's already acquired if, under the stream corridor provisions, which, which this says they're exempt from, right, special permit would be triggered by the floodplain, which they're also.
So theoretically, then we would have no involvement.
Yeah, but the applicant did make an application to this board.
I will gladly.
It's not often I give this kind of advice, but I haven't read the decision, and, you know. So, I mean, legally, I would say this goes back to the building inspector, and again, if you have conditions, like, and I've seen where they've had houses building, you know, elevated, and if you have conditions that you want to do, in terms of, I think it's your call, if there's any mitigation measures that you want to impose, that I think that are reasonable, I think you have every right to do that.
All within the code.
Correct.
It's all in public order, public sewer.
Right, so, yeah, like I said, it's a first one that I've seen like this, but I've been doing this a long time, and.
Gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, start somewhere. Now, they still need to, and I think you're probably gonna go there, they still need to comply with that floodplain development permit in addition to the building permits, they can't get that building permit unless they comply.
Yes, but, I think that's what I have about the building permit, so.
The other question I have, and I don't, I didn't hear, do they meet the front yard setback? I don't hear any exemption for that or.
I don't believe that there is a front yard setback in the HR zoning district, and I hope I addressed that in my comments, because I anticipated a question on it. Yeah, code indicates there shall be no minimum requirement setback or front yard setback.
But it was except that set at door and approval of the situation.
No, no, that's in the RU, this is in the HR, I believe the code references ninety-seven, fifteen, oh.
So, this is effective way, Sean, the floodplain development permit, we still talk about the offset and things of that nature?
Yeah, and there's two different conditions here, I don't want to get really too technical, but one house is in the AE, which is the hundred-year floodplain where they define the elevation of the floodplain, the others in the floodway, which is the channel that floods, for the house in the floodway, they have to demonstrate that they do not raise the elevation of the floodway, so they're gonna have to provide Frank with some sort of calculation, and then they still need to do that offsetting logic.
I think those are both condition.
And then Frank will be making a determination on the minimum lot area that we discussed earlier, whether that's a legally.
Pre-existing.
Yeah, and if it gets an unfavorable determination from Frank, he goes back to the ZBA. I think it's in Frank's lap, sorry, Frank.
My only other concern on this, and it may not be our jurisdiction, but, is that the people buying this need to understand that there's gonna be no other outside buildings, no storage sheds, no pools, and that, this is the house, and this is all you're getting.
By the way, I think the building's put a condition out, you put that around the permit, and ultimately, CEO has that as a condition, that there shall be, you know, no further development, no pools, and that could be in the permit, that way it's of record and it's flagged.
Let me keep it, can you?
It could slap to the side of the house, and four, ten, it's the bottom floor, it's kind of barred.
So, do we need an official decision of the application, or are you part of the applicant?
I would like one from the applicant, if you want to put that in writing as well, that would be.
About to withdraw the application.
Exactly.
That's fine.
That's fine, well.
Sorry to do that.
Nice work.
All right, thank you very much. Very much, good luck.
We are back, thank you for extending the meeting a bit.
Not a problem. Now we get into that.
Do you want to read the letter again?
You want me to?
Sarcasm.
Okay, so between you, Sean, and Lino, and Sean, we're here to hear what you have to say about this.
Yeah, so I think it's an amended approval, I don't think it's just something that you can just kind of dismiss, I think the applicant agrees with that. My biggest concern is just, you typically try to tie things to a certain trigger, you know, before signing, before building permit, before C O. In this case, you triggered this permit from Department Health through prior signing, and indicated why they can't comply with that, but there's nothing else kind of after that, you know, there's prior building permit, do you require a building permit on these structures, Frank, or no?
I'm sorry, I'm back to all in audio.
The farm migrant housing? I've been in discussions with Lee, but I asked, there's going to be absolutely no construction, he's going to go in as is. I'm not sure if there's any permits required at this point.
So there is nothing that we have.
To tie to.
To tie to, and I think that might have been a reason why it's tied into site plan signing, but they indicated you can't close on property to plan sign, so catch twenty-two.
I don't have a problem creating something to tie it into, whether it's a letter from Sean or Frank, basically saying, okay, you know, it's ready, the system is up and running. You know, instead of an official C O, maybe Frank can just issue a letter saying, the water system's up and running, you know, can be utilized.
What modifications are going to be made to the water system?
I don't know, what is the modification, it's an upgraded water system.
Yeah, there's a new wellhouse or something like that, then have you got that?
The well is already down. The well is bro, the well is tested, it's a drainage system, right?
Corrosion, we need to run the water lines.
Building permit for water lines to a house?
I don't want to really create something that is not required.
No, I'm asking if it's required, is what I was.
Is there any new electric running to these water systems? That might trigger a permit?
Yeah, yeah.
There you go, we got it.
Yes, yeah, because the coronator is going to need to be plugged in.
What is the underwriter's inspection? What is the condition, like a prior issuance of the electable permit for the water connections, they have to provide this operational permit, the operational permit's dependent on construction of the water system. So again, that's.
Oh, that's closed.
Right, it just gives it further down the road, so to speak, so that way, my client can close on the property.
So the closing will come first.
Spend all the money, you know, put in the, finish the water system, and then get the electrical permit.
Not be held back by the D O H.
Are you sure the D O H is going to require that water system to be operational before using the?
Yeah, I think before they issue.
I think it might be circular.
Before the operating permit, they would have to do an inspection to make sure of the water plant, before it's designed.
If we tie it to the permit that's going to provide electrical with the water system, then the water system won't be complete.
No, we could tie it to Frank giving the C O on the water system, the electrical on the.
Yep, that's different. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't put that heard.
That worked for you, Frank?
Yeah, so we're going to tie it to this electric permit prior to closing of the permit, certificate of compliance, maybe grab some of that language to.
So if the board's comfortable with that, I think it's just authorized in council for a amended resolution for your next meeting.
Comments at the same table?
I mean, they're in a pickle, and we need to try to help, it's my feeling, and whatever works.
In the same.
I think it's a legitimate solution.
Workable?
Do you want to send me your proposed condition, I'll take a look.
Sure.
We need a motion to authorize counsel to amend the resolution.
Condition five, right?
Five B.
I think it's five B.
Could I have sent motion? Marty, second by Phil, all in favor, say aye. Against?
Just one more, Sean, I think. I just want to make sure this is the last condition, I think we're pretty close, I saw there's some emails going back and forth.
I haven't looked at it in a while.
From my understanding, that everything is meant.
But since you'll be back in two weeks, we can.
Letting go of two weeks. All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Have a good night. Good night, everybody.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go over your next agenda, I also have to have something matters, please. So the next agenda will be solo liberty.
Send it again.
They submitted revised plan and everything else, that will be on for a draft negative declaration, provided that you're comfortable with individuals.
Now, in that, that meeting, as I told you, I won't be here, I'm still will not be there.
This is the eighteen?
The eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of schedule it gets in the work.
The remaining board members are going to be.
This is the eighteenth of September.
Two weeks.
I can't guarantee I'm going to be here. Swear me in, I'm ready to go. Sean, I'll be here.
I got Phil.
Leave me in there.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
This is going to be.
Okay.
Okay.
You got four.
So we have these four. No, we still have, Giovanni, he is here.
Guaranteed for. Okay, so solo liberty, all in audio, it's going to be back to the amended resolution and then further discussion, Mr. First just described, and then Gims Garden, if you wanted for the part two, neg, dec, and then resolution. Next item is housekeeping, October second, the first meeting on October is Jan. four, so I just wanted to make sure that we don't have a quorum for that night, and I have two members down right now, so.
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm here.
You're here, you're here.
That's Thursday.
Yeah, so it's two down.
So I will, I will check with the other two members.
Right, Jeffrey, Giovanni, and Eric.
Yep, will do.
If that date was not good, is there a backup date, or we just don't have anything for that?
It's up to the board, if you want to try to juggle the night.
Yeah, it's fine, in case we don't have quorum on that day, you want, do another date, just in case.
Phil, October second is January four. The day before, or Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, October second is the day.
Thursday.
The day includes.
Oh, you're asking, can we do it on Tuesday?
Right. I'm going to fix three meetings in September.
Are we expecting anything big on that, on the second, otherwise?
If you relocate it, if we move that meeting, R D M. two six seven five, two six five nine, was that today's staff meeting, they're going to be looking to make a submission on September eighteenth.
Which I would like to have all board members here, if possible.
So if you move that on October second, they may ask for that move date.
I just assume skip the date, otherwise, just cancel and go for a sixteenth.
How does everyone else feel? If, it's assuming we can't get the quorum on the second.
What's the question?
The thing is, if we can't get the quorum on the second, just skip that whole meeting and just wait two more weeks.
Right, and sixteen, so you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a makeup, you just skipped it, you cancel the second, just continue on the sixteenth of October.
Are we jamming up applicants?
No.
Okay, not jamming up applicants, let's do that.
So if we can't, if we can't get the second to have the quorum, then we'll just cancel that meeting.
Got it. And then the last housekeeping item is E A F's, again, I apologize about that part two, and I thought it was distributed, but Lino and I today were discussing, and I don't think he wants to prepare part two V A Fs.
Yeah, most of the boards I do work for don't want to be doing V A Fs, in terms of part two, it's usually for the engineer or planner, I'll review them, but the way I'm used to work, they don't want lawyers preparing those.
So that would be Sean's.
Right, and I work with Sean, who can do it, but they would, he would.
He'd be the lead on it.
Yeah, he'd be the lead, but I would review it, but again, which is, you know, the other news.
I thought you said they're doing the checkmarks.
Yeah, they don't want.
Kelly worked with you, we've done this, right?
Yeah, no, she used, she used to work with you doing it.
Yes, yeah, we would work together, but she was the primary preparer for this, so we didn't want to make any change to operating procedure without discussing.
So do you have a problem with that, Sean?
No, I don't, what likely happened is, likely Krista Nob, who's planner in my office, she does them routinely for other boards, she would likely do them, I would take a look, and then pass it on to Lino, and then we'll distribute it out to you.
So if there's any questions, do you have her come into the meeting?
If you'd like her to come into the meeting.
I don't know.
Sean and I would basically talk it through beforehand, so we'd be prepared to address those questions, it's just initial preparation, and again, in my history, they want to stay away from part two.
Usually part twos coming off of the part ones, not too controversial, translating the information over, unless it moves to part three.
Yeah, traditionally, there's always the planner or engineer will prepare that, and then they have to review it.
Any thoughts you want to raise?
I have no problem with it.
Not that you can vote on it, it's just, it just has an operation.
Just get hers. Any other issues the board has, if not, can I have a motion to go to the meeting?
No, I have a comment, just to let everybody know. Most of you know I'm part of the Orange County Planning Federation. In October, I'm not sure what date yet, we're going to meet, I guess on Monday to confirm, we're going to have a session, probably on a Friday morning, like from maybe nine to one, or ten to two, which will give you all four credits that you need to be on this board. So if you're interested, it's going to be going out, we're doing it special this time, as long as the town pays for the membership fee, which I think is a hundred and twenty dollars, a hundred and twenty. All, anybody from the town that wants to go to this will go free. So it's really a good deal for us, I know that they have free courses from New York Planning Federation, but if you want to come out and have a breakfast and maybe a lunch, and get your four credits, I just want to let you know what's coming up, and I'll let you know at the next meeting what the date is.
Thanks, Diana.
Thanks, Diana.
Any other comments?